I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, January 12, 2023. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. First item is Dr. Smith with a superintendent's update.
Wow, fantastic. Our first regular, regular board meeting of 2023. We did have the work session last week. Let me jump right into it. Let me not jump right into it. There we go. Many things have happened since we gathered together last week, but really across the school system and me personally. I did go to the Tri-County Honors Band Concert over at Calvert High School. And if you haven't been in to see the Auditorium Performance Center that kind of is the anchor of that building, that complex, it is just gorgeous. And so, all of our, the very best of the best for middle and high school from Charles, Calvert, and St. Mary's, all gathered together to put on just a wonderful concert. Shout out to Mr. Johnson, Ms. Johanski Gianuzzi, Ms. McComby, Mr. Gianuzzi, Ms. Borowski, Mr. Pearson, and Mr. Martin. Those are our band directors for middle and high school. They work with the children throughout December, and then they come back. But to have a concert like this right after you come back is something pretty amazing, and it was really well done. Of particular note was the guest conductor for the high school was unable to work with the kids on the weekend and come down and conduct because he fell ill. So, all of the high school, several of the high school band directors stepped in, and so they had five songs that they played, and each one was led by a different high school band director from the Tri-County area. So, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Martin stepped up to conduct, and I have to tell you, I just, to see them, I've seen them conduct here and on several things, but they really, they were, they're very much into it. It was really wonderfully done. Mr. Martin in particular, full tuxedo with tails, looked great, sounded great. It was really a great afternoon. What a wonderful thing. It requires all three of the counties to work together to pull off something like this, and they do it, and they do it seamlessly, and to see everybody interacting from the three counties like that, to see all the kids together on the stage working so well together, great. It's just a great strength of this incredible community. Our annual report, we have put together a fantastic guiding document visually engaging that summarizes where we are for this year, the work that we are embedded in. It is organized around the implementation of the blueprint, recognizing that the blueprint is not something new, it is an extension of our already ongoing work. And so, it is posted to our webpage, smcps.org. Right in the middle, you click on it. It's a fantastic document. Of course, it'll be what we use when we do the state of the schools later in the spring and kind of walk through. Thank you very much to Dr. Maher and all those who contributed to putting together a really neat document that kind of captures this moment in time, St. Mary's County, School Year 2023. Of important note, now, we will have a board meeting between now and then, but let's get that information out. Let's make sure that everybody knows that next Thursday, January 19th, is the Tech Expo at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. It will be packed. It is always packed. Thousands of people show up to take a look at the wonderful offerings of the tech center and to consider what opportunities are available for them to really delve into a particular field of study. I would encourage people to recognize it's a long, it's a window from 5:30 to 8:00. You don't need to get there at 5:30. So, it's okay if you spread that out and you get there at 6:30 or 7:00 or even 7:15 to kind of go through and do that progression. Be patient. There's going to be a lot of people there. It's going to be a great night. And what a wonderful jewel the tech center is for our kids and for St. Mary's County. On that same idea of thinking about where you are now, what you want to learn, and where you want to go next, the BECA Scholarship Fair, which will be virtual, is on January 24th at 5:00 p.m., hosted through the site www.smcbeca.org. There are, you know, there's well over $100,000 worth of scholarships available for kids as they graduate, covering the wide, everything that you could possibly think of, from going to, you know, a four-year institution for something like, I don't know, teaching, that would be great, all the way down to going into credentialing program for directly into industry. There are funds available and scholarships available and organizations that partner with the school system through BECA. So, please make sure if you have a senior who is going to be doing something next year, there's probably an opportunity to have those funds offset by receiving a scholarship. So, BECA, we're really, we're going to have $5,000 scholarships that we're offering for people who are considering going into education as part of the LEEDs grant. So, money, 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 money. So, here we are. We find ourselves at the 12th. We are off on Monday, the 16th, in recognition and remembrance of Martin Luther King, and truly to be a day of service. We have the Tech Expo that same week. We have a public hearing on the 18th. We have a joint meeting with the county commissioners on the 24th, and then the Scholarship Fair in the evening. We have the Board of Ed meeting that follows. We have an early dismissal on the last day, the 27th of January, and then we'll come back that last Wednesday, that first Wednesday of February to then approve a budget and send it over to the county commissioners. And this is just a wonderful piece of artwork that our kids over at the tech center have created, and I don't have the name of the person who created the artwork. I'll make sure that we go back and correct that as well. But we'll be pushing this out as well as we prepare for our day together collectively, remember, and to serve others on Monday. So, with that, we got all the way to the very end, our very last elementary school that Monasa and I had the opportunity to visit, was Benjamin Bannaker. So, I shall turn it over to the student member of the board.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So, I was very, very excited to finish the year with all 19 of our elementary school visits completed because that was a goal that I had set for myself, and I made that.
She set that goal for both of us.
Yeah.
But you knew.
Yeah.
I set that goal for us, and we reached it. So, go Dr. Smith.
Yeah, us.
Yeah, we did that. I just wanted to say a big thank you to Principal Serbiak and the fifth grade teachers at Bannaker, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Harris, Ms. Hunter, and Mr. Sully, because those kids were just so vibrant. And I mean that in like the most real way ever, because, I don't know, they were just participating the whole time, and they had so much to tell us, and I love hearing from kids who are in elementary school right now because I really just don't know what it's like anymore. I'm in my last year of high school, and it's very fun to talk to them. They just have a fresh perspective. So, some things that they talked about really loving at their school community and their environment was the teachers. So, shout out teachers. And they also just really loved the people in general, whether that was the staff that they worked with on a day-to-day basis or their friends. They all, multiple students mentioned the quality of their friendships at that school, and quality friendships are very important in life. So, that was great to hear. And then, they talked about their various extracurricular opportunities, which is awesome to get started early. They talked about their math team and their chess club. I hadn't heard chess club at any other schools, I don't think. So, that was, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, it was pretty active.
I was, wow. I bet some of them could probably beat me at chess, guaranteed. And then the math team was really great to hear about because I, myself, was on the math team in fifth grade, fun fact. Not at Bannaker, I was at Evergreen, but yeah. And then they talked about the awesome, like, scientific experiments that they've been having the opportunity to participate in in classes.
Shout out for STEM for All.
Yes, shout out STEM for All.
I mean, these elementary kids, they really do speak highly of those integrated units and lessons, the STEM for All. That really is a fantastic initiative.
Yeah, absolutely. Because hands-on experience is really like nothing else, you know. It makes you connect with what you're learning about. So, it's really, really awesome. They also have bus patrols. So, that was great to hear. The students take pride and, you know, ownership in that role, and that'll really prepare them for their transition to middle school and everything. And then, they talked about how they really love their end-of-year celebrations as a class, as a school, and they really just love the sense of community that they've developed at Bannaker. And even so, this year with a new principal and everything, they feel that that transition has been really smooth. So, that's great to hear. And then concerts, I wanted to talk about last because they actually convinced me to go to their concert the next night. So, I did go to their winter concert, and it was a great time. All three of the groups, or technically it was more than three groups, but all three of the, you know, sections, band strings and chorus, were all absolutely wonderful. There's a variety of music that reflected a bunch of cultural holidays that happened during this wintertime. And it was really cool because there was student participation in the kind of introduction of the songs. So, every time a new song was introduced, a student would come up and introduce it for some of the groups, so for some of the ensembles. So, that was really cool. Gave them an opportunity to speak for their musical groups. That was awesome. And then also, they had a student accompanist for one of their pieces for the chorus. So, that was super, super cool. But yeah, all in all, it was a super great time. I was glad I got to go. And yeah, I love elementary school. So, yes.
Very nice. So, we have concluded visiting the elementary schools. They're going to continue to share information. Monasa ends always with, we're talking about the importance of being kind and writing notes and recognizing others, but then making sure that they have the student member of the board's contact information that they can then, and we opened it up so any student can send an email directly from their account to the student member of the board's email account. So, I imagine we'll continue to hear from them as they go through the remainder of the year. And now, we shift in 2023 to focusing on the middle and the high school and the work of the superintendent, Student Leadership Advisory Council, and what we're working through for all of that. So, that's going to be fun.
Yes.
We're going to, by the time we get together in February, we'll be talking about what we did in January with all of them.
Yeah, our next full group Slack meeting is on January 25th.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow, that was like the shortest one ever.
Mm-hmm.
See, being efficient in 2023. Okay, we do not have any recognitions, no public hearing, any public comment. Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for December 14th, 2022, and January 4th, 2023, personnel, teachers, and personnel administrative and supervisory. So, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will move on to our first of two action items. Ms. Leano, we have the General Contractor Award for Window and Door Replacement at White Marsh Elementary School. Save on those heating and cooling expenses at some point.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present a recommendation for award a general contractor for the replacement of windows and doors at White Marsh Elementary School. This will be the last of the windows of the groups of windows that we needed to abate in order to put the security films to protect our school and students and staff.
Gremlins doesn't want to, does not want to advance. Mr. Howard, you're up again.
I would like to be very clear. I did not load the presentation this time. I came out, it was already loaded. I just clicked through it. I didn't touch this one.
What's yours called?
Windows Marsh. No, next one.
Yeah, because it's advancing on her local screen. Will, what do you, it's.
It's like thinking.
Well, the output's frozen for some reason. So, it's not.
It's just like the FAA crash, right?
Oh, no, don't, don't. When this happened before, we had to reboot.
That's what I'm saying.
Which one?
Everything.
Yeah, the server.
Yeah, because it's stuck there showing that.
Do we need to take a five-minute break while they?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, let's do that.
They're all here.
Oh, there's Jeff. Ah, not magic.
All right, let's.
Okay, so I'm here to present a recommendation for award for general contractor for White Marsh windows. Uh, the request is for approval to award a contract in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars for construction services and fifty thousand dollars for construction contingency to Shible Construction for the windows at White Marsh Elementary School. Designer Construction is coordinating this project on behalf of safety and security. We, the scope, as it says in the title, it's windows and exterior doors. We have the local, we have funds in the local CIP projected for this project. The major of the project will happen, the majority of the project will happen on the summer when the building is unoccupied. As soon as the teachers leave, we will start the abatement process and then we follow with replacing the windows. We have already working on the, all the paper documentation that we need to get ready in order to get the windows on time if this contract is awarded because of the lead times are so extensive now. And we will be working with a general contractor for this project. The reason is because abatement is part of it and there's a lot of coordination. We need a general contractor to coordinate the sub for the windows and the sub for the abatement. The project includes abating asbestos. In a study done two or three years ago, it was determined that asbestos is in the cock of the windows. And then the recommendation was to replace the exterior doors. There's no way to test the interior of the doors, but because of the age when these doors were being original of the building, it is suspected that it will also have inside insulation on the doors. And of course, it will include the replacement of new windows. How we do the procurement method, it's our two-step process where we first pre-qualify potential bidders based on their technical qualifications, experience, expertise, legal and financial standing. It is a base, it's a pass fail process and only those that pass are invited to pre-qualify, to submit a price proposal on the second step. We advertised on eMaryland Marketplace on September twenty-second. Seventy-four vendors received notification. Three contractors submitted technical proposals on October twenty-fifth. Out of those three contractors, we determined that two of them were responsible and responsive bidders and were invited to participate in the price proposal. And those two firms did submit a proposal on December thirteenth. The lowest bidder, it's Shible Construction, which is a very well-known contractor in the area. They have worked with us in the past. They do a lot of work for public school construction in all three counties in the area. They're working with us right now with Mechanicsville Elementary. And they are doing the windows there too, as part of the project. And at this time, I ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented and I am open for questions.
I just have one quick one since, and I thought of this, so is Shible, are they going to use the same type? Because Mechanicsville Elementary, those windows that they have in there are incredible because they're, you know, they're so big and they let so much light in. And I can't remember, has White Marsh had the same size?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Um, in, we're working with existing openings too, no?
Right, exactly, right.
Um, the, in, in Mechanicsville, it's a combination of frosted on the top where the panels are, perhaps that's where your question is going. I, I don't think Mechanicsville, uh, White Marsh is that way.
Okay, all right.
Um, it's pure storefront windows.
Right, okay, all right. I just, I, I can't visually remember White Marsh, but I just remember walking into Mechanicsville.
White Marsh is a little bit lower.
Yeah.
It's not as high as Mechanicsville.
That's what I thought. All right, thank you.
Man?
Um, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Um, first thing I saw was with the contingency, it's almost a million dollars. So my question is, with this study that you referred to a couple, a couple of years ago, are we at the end of the life of these windows?
More than that. We are very due to replace these windows. We, these windows are original to the building and I can't remember the age, but it's, all of these four schools that we're doing, they're in the fifteen-plus years, so yes. They're failing. It will help also with energy in the future. It does, I, we've already replaced them in Ridge. We've done fifty percent in Town Creek and it does bring a new ambience to the classrooms and to be able to see outside. The, the glass is better, it, it helps with the sun. So I, it will be beneficial for the school, for sure.
Um, that's all I've got. I've worked with Schnabel before, they're, they're very reputable. That's all I have.
Dorothy?
Um, did you say that this was the last school that needed?
Yes, there were four in the study. Ridge was the first one we did, then we did Town Creek and we're currently doing Mechanicsville with the renovation of the project and this is the last one of those group, yes.
That's all.
Thank you.
Mary?
No questions, thank you.
Catherine?
Um, with this project, will we have replaced or updated the windows in all of our elementary schools or do we still have more to do?
In all of them, that need replacement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it also then runs out the ballistic laminate on the, on the back so that all of our windows and all of our schools on the first floor have this application to make it much more challenging to enter the, the space.
Okay, all right, may I have an action or a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award to Shible Construction for the replacement of windows and doors at White Marsh Elementary School in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand and a construction contingency in the amount of fifty thousand.
Oh, second?
Second.
Jim?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion's carried, thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Beavers?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, Ridge Elementary School rooftop air handling unit replacements. So I'm here to request the approval to award Servicon Facilities and Mechanical Services in the amount of a hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars and a contingency of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the replacement of two rooftop units, R2U one and two, paired with DX cooling units at Ridge Elementary School. These two existing rooftop and DX cooling units, they were installed in ninety-seven. The units have been monitored over the past couple of years and due to their failing conditions, we are kind of in Band-Aid, duct tape mode. So the service life is at the end of use, they're twenty-five year lifecycle, they're at year twenty-six. The units provide climate control to the media center and the office areas of the school building. It is, this project was forecasted through the 2021 CMP and is included, incorporated in this year's CIP funds. So we plan, we are going to replace the existing units with like-kind units. The lower, the lower overall weight makes it easier for critical roof load limits to meet those without sacrificing the features. It is AHRI certified, which as you know, performance and EPA standards continually increase, so it meets all those performance standards. And it is a complete unit, so all parts are self-contained. We did put out an invitation to bid on December the twelfth, posted it to eMaryland Marketing Marketplace. We had twenty-six vendors that were notified, seven contractors did attend the pre-bid visit, site visit, three vendors did respond, Denver-Elec, Nova Facility, and then Servicon Facilities and Mechanical Systems. Servicon provided the lowest responsible and responsive quote for the rooftop unit and DX cooling replacements. They're a Southern Maryland company out of Waldorf. They do have experience in these areas, Maryland, Virginia and DC. They have done work for us. They replaced two HVAC units at Mowgli Street here in 2021, in June of 2021. They replaced some controls at various schools in 2020 and they are slated to replace the Greenview Knowles Elementary School fire tank supply lines. Again, construction amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, a contingency amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty. The lead time, you're not going to be surprised to know, is about twenty-three weeks. That's probably low compared to some of the estimates that I've shared with you. Warranties provided with the units are five years on the compressors and coils and one year on the rooftop units themselves. So with that, I ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Any questions? Um, no, I don't have any questions at this point, thank you.
Are these units just condensing units, is there air handlers?
Yes.
Built in?
Yes.
So it's a complete turnkey?
Complete, yep, both of them, yep.
And I have to assume that they're much more efficient too?
Yep, and, and as you know, as time progresses, refrigerant progresses and anytime you have to Band-Aid an old unit and buy old refrigerant because of supply and demand, that's incredibly, you know, expensive, so, yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
No questions? I have any questions?
Thank you, you covered everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you.
What does DX stand for?
Direct Expansion.
Thank you. I kept reading that going, I have no clue.
You will not trip up Dr. Beavers, Dr. Beavers. He goes through, he's got his cheat sheet, he's doing his homework. This is a, this is a man with a plan.
Yes.
Love it.
Thank you, I, that was my only question. My father, the former steam fitter, pipe fitter, HVAC guy would just be mortified that I did not know that, so.
Do you tie that in flashcards at dinner, Catherine?
No, apparently not. Or I missed it.
So, all right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the award of contract SMCPS 2023 MRAHUR to Servicon Facilities and Mechanical Services in the amount of a hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the installation of two new replacement rooftop air handling units at Ridge Elementary School.
Oh, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go forth and purchase.
All right, Ms. Bachner, our favorite time of year, program of studies.
I know, and it's longer this year, I am so sorry.
I see that.
Yeah.
Is that pesky half credit?
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, everyone. As Ms. Bailey said, it is the time of year, first meeting in January, we always come to you with the program of studies revisions. It is quite lengthy this year. We had really streamlined things in the last few years and made them very succinct, but we have a lot of things that we need to implement. A lot of things with the blueprint and the new health requirement caused us to do some things and we had a lot of suggestions, which is always a good thing, to have a lot of input from different people about things that we need to update. As a result of having quite a few revisions, I have added this year a supplemental attachment that you had that really gave a lot of details that I know that you wanted to, would want to have. I've also made that public so that the public could use those, that, those notes or the more detailed information if they wanted to ask any questions that they had during public comment or to me directly. And then also, of course, the program of studies itself is a wonderful resource, it's available online for anybody who wishes to kind of even dig a little deeper than what I've provided. So just to give some history, we, which we start with every year, this is consistent with policy IGA, curriculum and courses of study. We come to you today for the first reading of program of studies, we will come back to you on January twenty-fifth to entertain the public hearing and February eighth will become again to you with the same presentation with any modifications to be approved with the second reading. Submission and review process, just to remember, in the last few years, we have used this process. We have two windows open throughout the year for anybody to give us proposals for revisions. They are submitted by teachers, teacher teams, counselors, administrators and content supervisors. This year, we actually even had, we have parents on our program of studies committee and we had a parent recommend some revisions this year that you'll be seeing, that are coming before you. And then January through December, we meet almost on a monthly basis, we had eight meetings this year, through the year, to actually look at those proposals, talk about them, gain input from the larger St. Mary's County Public School community. And then, so what you're seeing today is proposals coming through that have been vetted and approved by the program of studies committee. Committee dates, eight of them, they're there for you, and I am just going to kind of scroll through, but we have forty-two members on our program of studies committee. We have a student from every high school now, part of our program of studies committee, and we have two parents as part of that. And if you remember, about four years ago, we had none of those. And we had, I believe Ms. Washington, you asked if we should have a parent recommend part of the program of studies and that has really grown. And it's been, it's really interesting to hear the students really ask questions and do that. So we have a student right now, I think we have a sophomore, a junior and a senior, which is nice to have that, that different, and one from Chopticon, one from Leonard Tanna, one from Green Mills. Just a reminder, because this happens every year, as questions, as students begin to schedule, just a reminder, no course can be taught in our county without being approved in the program of studies. So that's why we bring these revisions to you every year as a board, so that you can look at what we're asking to be approved. And then also, all courses in the program of studies may or may not be taught. So course offerings and how they're put into a schedule at the high school are dependent on the course requests that students are asking for as well as the available staffing. Also a reminder, this is new, that beginning next year, our eleventh graders are required to take a half credit, or zero point five is how we're going to see it in the slide deck, Health Two course to meet graduation requirements. This means, instead of an elective, as our eleventh graders currently have, they're going to have to take one of those elective spaces in their schedule and have the point five health credit backed up to another point five elective so that they have that full year course, they'll be paired together. And currently, we already have eighteen half-credit electives in our program of studies, but you'll see after today's present, presentation, we're asking to add quite a few more.
All right, so, hold on a second, so if it's okay with you, when we go through these different, can we talk about them as we go so we don't have to go through the whole presentation and then back up?
I would love to do that.
Okay, all right, I think that would be much more efficient.
Yeah.
And then on this eleventh grade health thing, is that required or is that where, just where we're slotting it?
Um, it is recommended by MSDE to be offered in eleventh grade. It is recommended that our Health One course be recommended in ninth grade, but kids can or students can take, we're thinking Health One, ninth or tenth grade would be preferred, we're hoping ninth grade, and Health Two, eleventh and twelfth grade.
Okay. I just had a quick question. So I know like my freshman year, there were seniors in our health class. Is that like not going to be like doable anymore?
No, it is allowed and it is allowed because it is a graduation credit, required course. So if a student did not take our advice and, and was able to take Health One in their freshman, sophomore, junior year, they'll absolutely have to take it. They're also going to have to take Health Two, it has to be before Health One.
Yeah.
Our Health One has to be before Health Two, so they'll have to do that. That also happens when we have students transferring to us.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Yeah, and so we have to make sure they meet graduation requirements, so we have to place them there, so it's unfortunate, a lot of students don't like being seniors in that class.
Yeah, so.
So it's not their preferred.
Okay, so would they just be taking like Health One maybe first semester and then Health Two, second semester?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right, makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions before? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we always start with our new courses. So we have on this slide deck, two CTE courses that are proposed. One is an introduction to computer applications, it is one of those elective or zero point five credit courses. A detailed description is in the addendum that I shared with you, really it's on those computer applications, Excel, Google Sheets, Access, those kind of things. And if a student does want a full-year course, we also have that already in our program of studies as computer applications and financial and data, data management. We're also asking to add computer science principles course and this course will remain as a, in the computer science pathway. It just gives an alternative, right now in the pathway, we have the AP Computer Science A and this course really mirrors that without that rigor to be done by May to, in order to take the AP course, but for the most part, it has and mirrors the same content as AP Computer Science A.
And would that be a full, full-year course?
It will be, yes. Anything that you see on these slide decks that do not have the zero point five beside it is a one-credit course.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The other CTE courses that we are bringing forth to you are sports and entertainment marketing. There has been a great deal of interest in this course and this has been brought up a few times. Now that we have approved that our Academy of Finance basically has a menu of choices for students that are in the Academy of Finance to take, we think this would be a great addition to that, that is a full-credit course. And then we also have the introduction to sports and entertainment management, that is a half-credit or elective course that could be paired with the health or paired with another half-credit course if a student wants to. And it is similar to the sports and entertainment marketing, but it is not the full course. So if you go into the description, it really shares with you what the, the difference is when you're taking a full, full-credit course, the course year, what it goes, it really goes into planning a, or making a plan for students to enter that field, so. The other one we have added as world language is AP Chinese Language and Culture and some of you were actually on the board when we started Chinese One many years ago. It is really a program that is becoming quite popular in our school system. And Ms. Tar and I talked because there's already, there's already Chinese Five in our program of studies and we are not taking that out. So some of you probably are wondering, well, we typically in our world language go up to level four and then we have AP. Chinese is different. They suggest we actually have five levels of Chinese before we do AP. So that's why we're not asking to remove Chinese Five, but actually keeping it in just for that, that Chinese is a very difficult language.
That makes a lot of sense.
So, but then, do they take this in conjunction with Chinese Five?
No, it is a sixth level class.
So how, so when do you start, so then what, you start Chinese in seventh grade in order to start it?
That would be the intent, however, I did talk to Ms. Tar, there are some students that will be able to go from Chinese Three to AP. They will not need, oh, excuse me, they'll go from Chinese Four to AP, they will not need to do Five, but that would be rare.
So Chinese Four is the prereq for this one?
It, yes, it would be the prereq for that, but I will make sure that we put that on there.
Okay, but if you're saying that, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the suggestion is we have Chinese Five and then AP, yep.
Our language courses offer like an opportunity to test out of a class, right?
They do.
Okay, because I took AP Spanish Language and Culture last year and there were students who were younger than me who had tested out of Spanish Four, so they jumped straight from Spanish Three to AP.
Because we have native speakers.
Yeah, exactly.
So they're able to take those tests and, and test sometimes out of those world language courses and that is approved by KOMAR. Some science and health courses that we're adding, another half-credit course, this is pretty interesting, Chemistry Two B, which is really a condensed Chemistry Two course. It is going to be very, very rigorous, but we have some teachers and students who really, really want some opportunities when we have half-credit courses to have some of these type of courses in, so we are absolutely going to offer that if approved by the Board of Education. And then we have, of course, the Health Two course that we haven't officially put in our program of studies, that is required by MSDE for graduation. So we're asking to add that and of course, that is also another half-credit course.
So before we leave all these, I mean, and I know there's more half-credit courses, but I was driving, this is all coming, I'm driving my daughter back to school on Monday and we were talking about classes. So what she has found is that there are a number of organizations, I'm not saying we have to do it this year, but they offer semester-long AP classes, right? So they do psych and soc together and they do macro, microeconomics together, right? So there's two, there's two semes, you know, two marking periods of each, right? So it's a half-credit, it's a half-credit course, but yet it still prepares you for, to sit for the AP exam and you're still eligible for the AP exam because from my understanding, the AP classes, you just have to structure the content to make sure it's taught, it doesn't have to be over a full course year.
Okay.
Okay, so, number one, her point is that that gives more people or more students AP classes to take, right, that if you want to. And then number two, it gives you like, if, if you are, if you do want to go into psychology or sociology or, you know, some type of social sciences, you have that ability to take those classes as a junior or senior and get exposure to it without taking up a full course load, okay? Same thing with economics, with the two. So I was thinking that, you know, if we have all these half credits, you know, maybe put that on the plate of the committee to see if that's, you know, if that's something that's, that's available. Um, you know, I, what do you think as a, as a senior?
Yeah, so, um, so I know that that is definitely a thing that sophomores in GIS do. They take US government during the first semester and then they take comparative government during the second semester and then they take both of the exams at the end of the year, so it's definitely doable and I know students in other systems do it as well. And I think some students would probably appreciate that just because there are students who want to take like, you know, a variety of courses and they just simply can't fit it into their schedule. So I definitely think that would be favorable for some students, it's just I'm not sure if, like, if it would be completely realistic because some, because AP courses are really, really challenging, so.
Well, this, her, her second point was too, it does get, it does somewhat prepare you then for college.
For college, the semester schedule.
Because your classes are on a semester basis, right? So it gives you that rigor, you know, coming out of high school, you know, because you already have the rigor for learning the AP class, but it gets you the mindset that you are only in that class from October, or, excuse me, from August until December, right? And then you have a final and then you're done. So it, you know, it's just, it's just something to consider because, you know, I'm like, well, I never thought of that, but then I was talking to Scott and I'm like, well, you know, when I was in high school, you know, we doubled up and did, you know, sociology for, you know, marking periods one and two and then flipped to psych for three and four, you know, so.
It's certainly absolutely something our committee could look at.
Right, so, you know, clearly it's not going to, but now with this half-credit, because we've really never had hanging half-credits out there anywhere, you know, that it, it might be something that we could offer to students and if their interest is there, that's fine. And of course, you know, I'm not the educator, so I don't know what would be involved in, you know, in condensing those courses down to only two semesters, but, you know, it could be something to look at because other systems are doing it, you know, because some of these kids come in with, you know, like thousands of AP credits that, to their name and, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good boost.
A step up, yeah. I'm currently taking a course that's kind of structured like that, so I'm taking Physics C, so the first half of the year was mechanics and then the second half of the year, we've moved into electricity and magnetism. But the weird part about AP classes being taught in a semester is that all of the exams are still in May.
Correct.
So that gap just makes it really, really like.
It would be as though the college board doesn't really bend itself to what people want.
Yeah.
It kind of stands apart as this is the way it's, it's going to be.
Like their higher education, they know more.
The largest challenge with offering psych, soc or macro, micro and compressing it into a semester is, will you have twenty-eight kids?
Right, and that's my, right.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you will not be putting a teacher in that, you know.
Right, exactly.
So if, so if five kids say, I want to do that, we can't afford to have a teacher teaching small classes like that.
No, absolutely.
That's why in, you know, accelerated pathways and programs and STEM programs and things like that, that's, that's where we have a little bit of the latitude. That's a great thing to bring back and we'll take a look at it as well as models.
So, so question, so if someone comes from another state that does that, offers, will they have a problem when they come here?
No, we have a transcripting process we do. So we take a look at an incoming transcript of a student and then we put those courses on our transcript for them. So we just transfer them. Very, very, very rarely do we not have a course that transcripts. I mean, occasionally if a student's in a private school with a very specialized curriculum, that makes it a little difficult, but really that is something I'm rarely called on to actually help with anymore because pretty much this, the counselors have that transcripting down pretty well.
I know it was a challenge. I know it was a challenge for a student who'd been homeschooled and then came into the high school. That I'm trying to transcript what she had taken against what, what we offered and, and could accept based on MSD, it did prove to be a challenge.
Yeah, that is very challenging. And in the last couple of years, we have worked with Student Services to provide summer reviews and summer actually testing for those students so that we can get them properly placed before their school starts. Cuz you want them to have a really nice schedule before, to walk in.
And that, and, you know, thankfully that is what you were able to do for the student, so.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to say that courses like this, Chemistry two B, are probably a really nice alternative to maybe just like straight away jumping to those half semester AP courses because like Chemistry two or physics that, like honors physics classes.
Yeah, I'm not implying that you put, I mean, I'm implying, right, like the half credit AP classes, I think would be two that would mesh, right? So my thought would be the same students that would wanna take macro, right, would also take micro. So rather than taking, you know, junior, senior year to take all that up, you can take both of those in your junior or senior year and have two AP classes to your, you know, on your transcript without taking up two full years.
For sure.
Because, you know, once you get your labs in, you know, then you've got an extra, you know, you've got an extra period of lab and it's tougher to fit everything, so.
We, we experienced that physics.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi.
Well, cuz you're all, you're all in a singleton, this is a master scheduler's nightmare. Because then somebody says, I demand that my child is in this course that's only offered at one particular time. And you, again, you have to bend yourself to the thing that is, not the thing you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why we put the little reminder slide in this year because it's always a caveat of this program of studies.
I just wanted to say that half credits like Chemistry two B are definitely a really great opportunity for students.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a win-win.
And I hope you're seeing that there is a variety of elective point five courses we're adding or, and even already there, which is really nice cuz we, you know, if you remember last year, the board recommended and approved an SAT prep course as a, a half credit, as well as a PSAT. So we're actually adding a really nice variety, some CTE courses and things like that that give students some choice. So it's not just, I'm taking Health two cuz I have to, right? And I'm having to take this course, you know, it's really nice. Which comes to nice, we're also adding or asking to add an CCR seminar course. And this has blueprint written all over it, if you've been with the blueprint, ha- half credit. This course is an elective course. It's offered in one semester and it would really be a support pathway for students who we find don't meet CCR in one or both areas and give them that. But it also, if you look at the course description that we put in here, there's a lot of other skills in there. Some executive function skills, some organizational skills, some skills for career exploration and things like that. We did have one of the parents on our committee said, but if a kid's CCR, can they still take this? This is a really good course. And yes, a student still could take this if they're CCR because it does teach a lot of great skills, even if you are CCR. So that was the parent's input at our committee was they wanted to make sure that all students would still have access to this even though it's called CCR seminar. Any questions on that course? Okay, we are done with the addition of courses and some, then some course name changes. Typically, these always come from MSD and this is no exception to these. So Production Engineering one, we would like to rename that to Manufacturing Engineering Technology one. And then Production Engineering two to Manufacturing Engineering Technology two. And of course, that is a result of MSD's request that we do that. Now, Ms. Allen and Ms. Washington, who've been on the board many, many, many years, that's, I think, how we started the courses. And then we went to production engineering, so now we're back, we're at full circle with those courses with MSD.
What's old is new again.
Exactly, so that might be, you're like, wait a minute, that's why. Course description change, we have a new German teacher in the last two years who is doing a phenomenal job with our German program in our county. And she really has dug deeply into the program of studies and came to us and said, we really need to change the description because this description as currently written is really, really focused on the reading parts of our curriculum, which is absolutely important, but there's a lot of other important parts to our curriculum, as well as speaking, writing, and the culture piece is that we have done. And with the textbook adoptions we've done over the years, that is definitely something I'm sure you've seen over and over is that culture, especially that speaking piece. So the detailed descriptions for German one, two, three, and four are also in the addendum or the attachment. But we are asking that those descriptions be updated to reflect what is caught and the resources that we use. Health Education one, we need to change the description a little bit because now we have Health two. So we wanna make sure that the Health one description is succinct and reflects exactly what we taught in Health one and the Health two description is similarly so apparent or a community member or to anybody can look at the program of studies and know what Health one encompasses as well as what Health two encompasses. Chemistry one and two have been revised of the description. The only thing that's been taken out is this one sentence that says, this course is recommended for students who have demonstrated a need for skill development or skill, skill improvement as indicated by previous science coursework. A parent actually brought those all to us because this was the only sentence remaining, if you remember quite a few years ago. I think it's been six years ago now. We had many of our courses were academic, certificate of merit, and either honors or AP. So the only difference between the certificate of merit and the academic was this sentence. But right now, our academic courses are not recommended for ki- kids who have a desk, demonstrated a need for a skill. It's the course. It's what we should be teaching to the college and parent readiness standards. So she brought that to our attention and we do need to remove that. It actually was removed from most of our courses, but what you'll see coming forth are the ones that were remaining that were inaccurate. American Government is another one. Grade band changes. The ones with the grade band changes we're asking for is Advanced Studies and Technical Theater. It's currently ten through twelve as the grade band. We're asking for nine through twelve. I love this recommendation because if you've been to any of our middle school productions, theater productions, they are amazing. And so students are coming to our high schools now with a great deal of skills in theater. And so we wanna be, allow them, if they've proven with that competency for them, not to have to take Theater one, but actually go into this course. Physics one and Physics Honors one, this was a surprise to me cuz to me, it's sort of like, this absolutely should be in there. It was current grade band for Physics one was eleven, for Physics one honors was ten through eleven. And we would like to extend those up to twelfth grade because we want any student that is a senior and wants to take physics and hasn't had that opportunity, didn't take that already, to have the opportunity to take those courses.
I have a question.
Sure.
So are the grade bands like requirements or like limits, or are they just suggestions?
They're really limits.
Okay.
And if a student is, if a counselor wants to exceed or go outside of those grade bands, they have to get special permission with myself, my department, or higher than my department.
Okay.
Yeah.
And understand, part of this is, again, a function of creating a workable master schedule in a school. You have to have, these are what the majority of ninth graders and tenth graders and eleventh graders and twelfth graders are going to take. So you can build a schedule around it. When you have people who are taking twelfth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, ninth grade, twelfth grade, it, the, the master schedules have a real hard time effectively operating.
Yeah, and I definitely saw that with Lunterton this year. Those counselors are awesome. That must be the most grueling job ever. I watched them do it, it was.
Fitting all the puzzle pieces.
And each student's different.
Yeah, exactly.
Each student is different based on the choices they make. So we do have an amazing counseling staff that can kind of track that all.
Yeah.
And they take it seriously.
Choice and voice, look at that.
And as students get closer to graduation, they have more freedom to choose different courses, so that makes it all.
If they pass their courses, yes.
Wait till, wait till it's a post-secondary worlds where like, they don't, it doesn't, like colleges don't, don't work towards your interest. It's, it'll, it's quite.
Be a huge advocate for yourself.
It's, yeah, it's, from the very beginning, you need to make sure that when you go in, you go, I wanna graduate in this amount of time. I need to plan layout. You have to, here are the courses that I need, then like it. We're a bit, we're a bit spoiled in St. Mary's Middle School.
And when you become a parent of a college student, you understand that.
This year, yay.
So what, remind me the science requirements for graduation?
You have to have three lab sciences for graduation and now they're specified that you have to have.
That's what I wanna know.
The, yes, earth, space, science, or biology and physics, chemistry. So I think that we have been able to have the kids take any of those, well, they have to take biology, definitely cuz that is where our MCAP assessment is in biology. But we've been able to take our earth, space, science, our chemistry and our physics and make, make them have components so that they cover
That's what I wanted to know.
all of the graduation requirements. So they can sort of take their choice still of those three, as long as biology is one of them and meet the graduation requirements.
Okay, that's what I wanted, cuz I thought, I thought physics and chem were somehow, you know, that you could do one or the other now.
You can. Most students do do biology, then chemistry, and then physics. We have a great number of students who do take the earth, space, though.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Contemporary issues is another grade band change we're asking. That is a very, very popular class. And because scheduling conflicts, especially for students who are in the tech center where their schedule gets really, really full very, very quickly, that the request was to allow eleventh graders or juniors to take that course too. Prerequisite changes, lots of prerequisites. We've been really working hard in the last years with prerequisite changes to make sure that our courses are accessible to as many students as we can make them accessible while still ensuring that the kids who are enrolling those classes are successful. So it's really that balance of making it more accessible and making sure they have the prerequisite skills needed for the class. So the first one is photography. A few years ago, I came before you and we asked that Digital Art one be considered a fine arts credit. So now that it is, it absolutely could be considered, just like Visual Arts one, as a prerequisite for photography. Astronomy, it is a half credit course. We propose that there is no elective or prerequisite for that. Currently, I believe it said you had to have two, two science courses. There's not a need for that. It's an elective that anybody with interest, especially since we've added the Health two half credit course, can absolutely be something of an interest to student. We definitely want them to partake of that course.
And the, on the course descriptions for both astronomy and then for the next one, I mean, can we put somewhere that, like, cuz the half credit courses aren't going to meet your science requirements, correct? So maybe that's what we need.
Actually, that is in the addendum, it says.
And I didn't flip back and forth between the two because I remember when we went to the CSM dual enrollment, that was like the big thing because geology and astronomy were all on the list, but, and the parents didn't understand why it didn't translate to a science credit for graduation.
We have here that we would like to also add a course note, which the course does not count toward the three-year science credit requirement for graduation.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
Geology is the other one that we've removed the prerequisites. It is also a half credit elective course. And again, we have also added the note, Ms. Bailey, for that class, that it doesn't meet the science requirements. That will also be for the Chemistry two B elective course that's new. That will also have that note because it does not also meet, even though it's a compressed Chemistry two class, it does not meet the requirements for graduation for science. I know this is all kind of glopped together. I do encourage you, please, to look at the addendum cuz it gives exactly why, the rationale of what was removed. But we took a hard look at Biology two, Biology one honors, Chemistry one, Chemistry one honors, Physics one, and Physics one honors. And we have revised the prerequisites to really mirror the mathematics specifically that needs to be done before those kids take those, or students take those courses. There is not a need for a student to have, be in geometry concurrently when they're taking chemistry. There's nothing in chemistry that is based on geometry skills. So we really took a look and I give Dr. Zimmerman, who's a new addition to our staff, credit for all of this. This is her work and really digging into that. And I think it really, really adds access to many of these classes, which we want kids in these classes, and really, really gives them the prerequisites of what math is needed for the courses that they want to take.
And I think that's really awesome because there are a lot of fields that are very science-heavy but are not as math-heavy as you might think. So kids often get caught up in that, oh, but I am not very awesome at math. And it's like, but that's okay because you're good at what you're interested in, so.
Yeah, and we want them to be interested in these classes.
Yeah.
For repeated course credit, we have added, asked to have painting considered and it gives a really nice rationale of why. It would be a repeated credit that we would work, especially with our AVPA students with different mediums and different projects that they would be working on. They really get into, especially when they're juniors and seniors, a particular medium that they're very interested in and really wanna pursue that. And that gives them an ability to do that, whether it's temper, you know, whether it's oil paints or whatever they want to do. Athletic Conditioning two, we're also asking that, that is already a half credit course, but we're asking it to be a repeated credit course. So Athletic Conditioning two is already a half credit course, but we're asking that it to be a repeated credit course because students are asking for that to be part of their schedules. I did go into the program of studies before I came today just to make sure that I really reread the Athletic Conditioning one versus the Athletic Conditioning two description cuz both of those then would be repeated credit and there is differentiation between the two.
So what kind of constitutes repeated credit? Does that just mean they can take it like two years in a row?
And get credit for it on their transcript.
Okay, awesome.
Yep. Course deletions, these are from CTE, HVAC, Case Aviation Pre-Engineering one and two. And it's, it's, based on what the board, but I do have rationale for each of those if you need rationale for those cuz I know that's pretty, those are usually questions that I thought maybe you would want to have answered. So I can go through each one of them if you'd like, or if you'd like me to do that.
That probably would be nice, thank you.
For HVAC, that was removed. We had, we could not find an instructor for that pathway for several years. So that was removed. Case, we have talked to you all about before. We had very, very low enrollment regardless of what we would do to try to promote the program. We moved it from a three-year to two-year program, hoping that would help. That didn't. We only had three students in this past year that even signed up for interest into Case. And we only had, when the program was fully functional two years ago, seven students in the entire program.
What does Case stand for?
Curriculum of Agricultural Science Education.
Very, thank you very much, Dr. Sir.
Thank you.
We also had an aviation course that we lost, we didn't have staffing for. We didn't have staffing for that. We had, we actually were able to, we had a stu-, a teacher leave. We were not able to replace the instructor. Those students, by the way, that were all in the pathway, we're taking care of. The kids can finish the pathway and we're fine. We use that position currently in the tech center to add another engineering program. So we have actually doubled our engineering program at the tech center with that position. So, and that is completely full too. So we have two very full cohorts of engineering, which is amazing. We also still have production engineering, but we have, so really, and we also have CAD, we have a lot of different engineering options. Which brings us to Pre-Engineering one. You're like, why are we taking away a Pre-Engineering one and two? This is a, an old course that was put in by MSD years and years ago that could, we really never employed this as a county, that could count in lieu of your two world language courses. So kids could, I know, kids could take Pre-Engineering one and two instead of taking their two world language as their graduation requirement. As I said, we rarely had any students who ever employed this. We always kind of really wanted them to either take the world languages or be a CTE completer and go those pathways. Sometimes we would get students from different counties where this is a little more prevalent. I think Baltimore City and Baltimore County really did use Pre-Engineering one and two. When I look at the actual curriculum, it reminds me, not exactly, it reminds me of the old shop classes of, of how we used to do things. So I don't want anybody thinking we're taking engineering out of how, I mean, and our engineering program is growing. It is absolutely growing. But Pre-Engineering one and two, we are asking to go because MSD does not recognize them anymore either. So they're asking us, they are not graduation requirements anymore. We cannot count them as that. And we don't have the shops anymore in our schools. So, any questions on those four courses?
Yes, I have two. So the HVAC, you know, because we still have a lot of businesses in the area. It, it requires a teacher, not a business owner, to come in and.
Oh, we could, so if we, if you could find an HVAC technician who is willing to earn a teacher's salary, come back in and then go, and then go through the educational coursework within the timeframe that we, that we put forth to be a teacher, we'd gladly run the course. There is, there is, there is nobody involved in HVAC who will earn a teacher's salary.
Or aviation.
Or, or, same thing with aviation. I mean, that's a real challenge. We should have an HVAC program, but we can't find anybody to teach it.
We've been looking for what, three years?
Oh, perennially, I mean, yeah.
Get one and then we lose them right away because they realize they can go and make more money.
Well, we can't, well, I mean, we, we, we struggle to hire staff. Well, we can't, well, I mean, we, we, we struggle to hire staff and, you know, that. Anybody out there, if you want to make a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, you're going to have to work really hard. But HVAC is absolutely the way to go for that. Everybody needs air conditioning, but, you know, that, I mean, that's, that's the greatest challenge ever. And, and if we were, if we had the latitude to provide a different salary structure for, for instructors, that would be one thing, but we, we don't. We have negotiated agreement. We have to pay them what we have paid them.
Please know, though, if we have a student who's very interested in HVAC, we will still absolutely work with that student to do something like an internship. Maryland apprenticeship program. That is where we can absolutely, our work, our CRD class, those classes absolutely can help students. We pair them up then with somebody in our community to get those skills. So I don't want you to think just because we're not able, we haven't done other things. To be able to make sure that a student who has any interest in something, you're right, is very valuable for our community. We, we're working on those avenues to get them some skills so that they can be those members of our community.
Plus, the tech center has very robust relationships with. Some of the unions, you know, electrical union, the steam fitters union, so that. That our students do have the opportunity then to be assisted in working their way into those, you know, journeyman intern. You know, so that they can learn the program right out of high, right out of high school. It's just that we don't have the capacity to teach it, and I think in many instances. Some of these outside organizations would really rather put our students, our graduates through their particular program. For a variety of reasons, not the least of which is making sure that they are trained specifically on the kinds of work. That they will be expected to do when they walk out of there, and then they have lots of opportunities to have on-the-job training as well.
With their equipment. That's another thing that, especially with HVAC, that's very important for them, is their equip, you know, and they want students to train on their equipment.
So my other question is, do they have to be a teacher before they can teach? Or can they do like an internship?
Right, so the, the, you know. This is, this is a, that's, you are right in the middle of one of the most important conversations we're going to have about public education over the next several years. Is how do we, how, the traditional way in which people became teachers is not the way people are becoming teachers anymore. And certainly, when you talk about things that are offered over at the Forest Center, the Core Technology Center. The majority of those people, you know, they're coming from industry, so they, they have a great deal of expertise. They apply that expertise. We offer them a provisional certificate, and then they have to work toward earning the credentials that'll be recognized by the state of Maryland. So that they can become a certificated teacher. It all falls under the alternative pathways to, to becoming a teacher. Pay close attention to the State Board of Ed meeting on January twenty-fourth. Because the two regs that govern certification and renewal of teachers are, it's a complete repeal and replace. That's coming before them, and it includes a lot of information on that very specific topic. But we are, but we are doing a work, we do have a fantastic workaround with the Apprenticeship Maryland Program. Where we can get our students into situations where they can, they can learn industry standards out in industry. While being compensated for their time and being awarded school credit for their work in the partnering group that, that's hosting them.
So are the apprenticeship programs that CSM offers in things like HVAC and plumbing and so forth. Are those eligible for dual enrollment?
Oh, sure. I mean, under, under, under the blueprint. That's going to be one of the challenges that we have, is that the blueprint loosely interpreted says that. Once a child is college and career ready, you, you, at the end of tenth grade. Any post-secondary course that you are interested in taking, the school system is responsible for compensating, for paying for it. The logistics of working out all of that stuff is going to be a real challenge, and ultimately, it's a great opportunity to be working with the College of Southern Maryland. Because they have a whole industry and trade center that's, that's conveniently located in the middle of the county. That does have welding and HVAC and carpentry and electrical and all of that stuff there, so.
And amazing equipment and labs.
Oh, my, oh, my gosh. Absolutely.
And right now, we vet those courses as they come to us as a request, and then we work with CSM staff to look at the syllabus and, and. Our supervisors with their professors and their leadership to be put on our approved dual enrollment course listing, which we have like eighty-five classes on there already. To add, so we add constantly to that course, and we remove and we change, because a lot of times CSM also changes course numbers. So we have to keep up with that, too. So that's a constantly moving document for courses.
Thank you.
That'd be a good thing to do. The other thing we're asking to delete is the Family Life and Human Development course, Health One and Health Two encompass this content. We do not need that course. We have some clarifications we'd like to just share with you today. They've been part of the application process for the tech center. But we felt like we wanted to make sure it's clarified, and then also clarified in the program of studies with a little bit more detail, so there's no questions from the community. Or we make sure that we answer questions from the community. The first thing is, students applying for a Forest Center program must complete an online application by the priority deadline. If you go to the tech expo, they start that. They actually do that, and any single counselor in any school will help students do that in their school building. So, parents, please, just know that. And students submitting application after the priority deadline will be considered if space is available. So many students don't submit by the deadline. It doesn't mean that you will not be considered. If there is room in a program, your application can absolutely be considered. Applications are scored and ranked based on attendance, GPA, and discipline, and preference is considered for students going into eleventh grade. So that is somebody that's preferred. Our programs are, for the most part, two-year programs. So eleventh and twelfth grade, and that's nice, because then we can also see that a student really is kind of up with their graduation required courses by that time.
And we have a number of courses at the tech center that are so popular that. Getting your application in after the priority deadline almost guarantees that you'll be left.
If that's the preferred course. Some kids have many interests, and so that works in their advantage, but you're correct. And then with the Forest Center reviews the application, and they, based on registration scores, they're accepted into programs until the classes have reached. The capacity, and my understanding is, it is, there are so many seats for each high school. So it's not like all the kids from Choptecon applied and got in, and the Great Mills and Lenartown kids don't. They take the unequal amount, my understanding, for each program from each of the schools, if there's applicants.
That is correct.
And then just to, just to let you know, it is, it is critical for the students who are applying to be on track. To earn a minimum of the five credits, because students that have to repeat ninth-grade courses are not going to have room. To be considered, oh, sorry, to be considered for. For our center programs, if they're trying to apply to be a tenth grader, because you can apply to be a tenth grader in the program. But we really take a hard look at those tenth graders are applying to make sure that they're meeting graduation requirements in that ninth-grade tracker. Which, again, is a word from the Blueprint Kerwin Commission. So I know a lot of information. I encourage you to really look at the program studies as well as the attachment I gave, because I tried to give a lot more details there.
I do have a question. So how does the information get to the parents to let them know that it's online, the application?
Oh, okay, absolutely. So as shared in Dr. Smith's presentation this morning, on the nineteenth of next week. We're going to do a tech expo where we have thousands of people who will come. Our tech center staff also goes to all of the high schools and does presentations during, I believe, one-hour lunch. They'll do presentations there. And try to, to get students there. We do smores in each of the middle and high school principals for their schools. They do smores notifications, and our website has all of this information. We also give reminders at Rising Freshman Orientation Nights, which are the first week of March.
When do the applications close usually?
I saw March third, but don't quote me on that. I think I saw that date.
I do have one more question. Just to clarify, so any of these course descriptions that are offered and everything, parents. Can go on the website. More information so that they will be satisfied with descriptions and what's, what the curriculum involves.
I would, I would go one step further. So, once a child is enrolled in a course. The Schoology app that we use for all of our coursework, the parents have their individual log on. They can see every single thing that is being instructionally offered within the course through that portal. As well as the work that's being requested of their child, as well as the timeline and calendar and schedules for all the, all the, all the work.
But while you're enrolled in the course, not necessarily when you are selecting the course, with your guidance counselor, like, making selections this year for next year. That, that is when you rely all on the program of studies.
And that's why we come to you now, so that when we do a final approval, the first board meeting in February. We have about two weeks, my department, to actually put those approved recommendations into our new program of studies, once issued every year. And upload it so that by March first, when the counselors are ready to share everything with parents and start working with student schedules. Everything is kind of aligned in timeline.
And I, I have to say that the work that the board's done over the last number of years to make sure that. Not only students have access to everything that they need insofar as what the expectations are. You know, what the homework is, what their grades are, what their attendance is, anything like that, the parents also have access to. And so it is very much different now than it was just a few years ago. And I appreciate the fact that, and we work toward, making sure that parents do have all of this. But especially that students do, so that they can learn to advocate for themselves, so that they can learn that, that sort of. Work-life balance of what do I have, what do I need to do, and when am I going to have time to do it? And I, I know in my household, my daughter took absolute advantage of that. And really served her well in everything that's happened since.
My, my son's missed a bunch of classes for sports, so my email is blowing up with, from Schoology. John Taff Bailey missed this. He didn't do this. I'm like, oh, my gosh, right, all because like he misses like seventh and eighth period like every day. So, one of which is geometry, so, you know, like, everything is, I have like at least fifteen emails of stuff that hasn't been turned in. So.
Gone are the days of, what did you do at school? Really, you were at school all day and nothing? No, nothing happened. Well, let's pull up Schoology.
My only, my only comment on this whole thing, with, and I'm going back to this, this half-credit health thing. With the recommended grade bands, I know MSD recommends it for your junior year. But I, and I'm thinking of, once again, what the struggle is for students to get their schedules done. Their junior year, right, because if you're going on to college, that's your cutoff for your transcript for college applications, right? So your junior year is kind of piled up anyhow. So if that health two predator, whatever it is, can be opened up that you could take as a sophomore. I think that might be beneficial for some of the kids that are on, you know, on track to go to school.
I agree, and, and I will tell you, since the inception, we have been asking and working with MSD, asking for a virtual option also. So that we can maybe offer virtual options and opportunities for students to take this class at any time that they want to after they have taken health one. And they said that we probably will have that availability at the end of next year.
Yeah, foundations of technology.
We offer that over the summer, like, remember that you could sign up and take this.
My sister did.
Right, exactly, that if you didn't want to jam your schedule, just, I mean, just because like some of the kids are going even on this, in the STEM track in college. Those, I'm telling you, there's labs and it's just, it's a, it's a schedule breaker, you know, and then to have to add that half-credit health. You know, and then another half-credit filler class, or whatever we want to call it, not that the content is not relevant. But it's just, it, it, it gets tough.
And we already have parents very concerned, they don't, they wanted to, it's a requirement. We do have parents.
You know, give them more options and not just, not, not, don't lock them into junior, senior year, because it's.
So, yeah, so is MSD the ones who are saying that, like, it has to be taught in seventh, or, in, sorry, in eleventh or twelfth grade?
They're not requiring it.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I think it would definitely benefit students if there was more variety and options of when to take it. Some of my classmates have taken classes as like independent study concurrently with their other courses. So like, one of my friends took like an FOT, our sophomore year during one semester. Like, on her own, and she just had a teacher that she like reported back to, kind of. But I don't know how that would work with health, so I, I don't know.
And I think we'll be able to add more options once we get a year under our belt. We weren't even ready to offer it to anybody until next year, because we had a curriculum, right? Hoping that MSD would give us curriculum, and they still haven't yet, so. Yeah, we have fantastic teachers who have, have developed that for us, but hopefully it will get better and better. Okay, anyone have anything else?
Oh, I just came up with a question. So teachers who would be teaching health two during one of the semesters. Would they just be teaching health two during the other semester?
Um, that's a school decision, so I don't know.
So they are health teachers. So they would be teaching sections of health one, health two, full year, like that. Well, really, ultimately, it used to be that PE, we had teachers who did PE health, and, and quite frankly, now we're, we're getting to. Teachers teaching just PE or just health.
Oh, really?
Again, it, it depends, it depends on the school, it depends on the schedule. Everything that you are, everything that MSD is, is passing and proposing and moving down with no additional money. There's not one penny put towards the full year of health initiative from the Maryland State Department of Education. This is. The, the high school master schedulers, you are, we are creating. It is, it is exceptionally challenging, and at the end of it, we're getting to the point where there's almost two thousand kids at Lenartown. And seventeen hundred kids and seventeen hundred kids. Each one of them has to be individually scheduled, and now you're talking about by semester.
Yeah, right, but like not all the courses are semester.
No, it'll, no, just, just some, singletons and doubles, and we used to do blocks and blockettes, and I used to do this on a DOS machine. It, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's something.
Shout out counselors.
Shout out to counselors and master schedulers in buildings.
Well, and it's frustrating, because even sitting on the AIB meetings, you know, they started with, oh, well, you know, we need schools to start to offer this, and they're talking about it in May. And I'm like, you know, and hopefully we can get it in place by the start of the school year. I'm like, what are you talking about? Like, our program of studies comes in January, by May, our schedules are finalized. So if you want something to be offered and kids to enroll in August, that ship has sailed. Like, you're, you're looking for the, for the next calendar.
MSD High School Test Force. We spent a year trying to explain to people how, how things work and then.
Right, and I get these like stupid looks, like, what?
And a lot of counties do these meetings and conclude them by winter break. Do you know what I'm saying?
The perception is that everything's built over the summer, right, like, you know, that, I guess, the kids just magically get schedules in, in August. Thank you very much.
What was MSD's rationale for saying that it's recommended for grade eleven?
I think the standards and the.
I think the content that was in.
It's a requirement for the students who will walk across the stage in twenty twenty-four. So those will be juniors next year.
They knew no one could get the class ready.
Correct.
As a sophomore, yeah.
That's why it's like, we recommend it for the kids, because these are the ones that are going to have to take it if they want to graduate.
So is this one, that if someone wanted to take it in tenth grade, that they could apply to you for a waiver? And take it in tenth grade?
Probably, yes, yes. I'd be a little hesitant this first year, because.
Right, understand, I'm just looking at, you know, going forward. MSD is not known for being speedy or timely in what they do. And, and so I would, I would hope that. As, as, you know, as the local, we would have the opportunity to make a decision based on the, on the best interest. Of whatever student was asking to do this, and to do it on a case-by-case basis, which is how we treat so much.
If it's recommended and not required, then we can, we can include in the program of studies that. If it's recommended and not required, then we can, we can include in the program of studies that the grade band is ten through twelve.
We can, and then we can say a course note that says that this is recommended for eleventh and twelfth graders.
MSD recommendations is.
And the prerequisite only has to be completion of Health One.
Right.
Then, then at least, I don't know about the rest of the board, but it would be my request that this be shifted to say grade ten through twelve.
Okay.
You're going to kill the master schedulers because you're gonna, next year, you're going to have tenth graders enrolling in Health II and it's eleventh graders that need to have it and.
Right, because you don't want to take this seat up.
So we're going to have to figure out some way to pull out all the tenth graders who went in there because they're going to have to have a lower priority to the eleventh and twelfth graders that go in there because it's a graduation requirement. Could we just please say that?
Eleven and twelve this year?
Eleven and twelve this year and we'll come back and take a look at it. The other part of that is understand the tenth grader's schedule doesn't have a lot of half semester courses.
Got it, okay.
They're, they're banging out the things that they need to do to be college and career-ready by the end of their tenth grade year.
Also, a lot of tenth graders have not taken Health One yet.
If they have, they've taken, they've taken Health PE and they banged it up in ninth grade. And if they're taking it in tenth grade, they're taking.
Yeah, I don't want to make life more difficult for you. I think MSD already does that well enough on their own. So I, but I would ask that, that somehow that be revisited after it's been in place for a year.
Well, right, because then if you get, then if you have your kids that are going to the tech center, right, for, you know, starting eleventh grade, since that's when most of the programs start, then they're still going to have to fill up their half-day schedule with Health and another filler class, right? For, in eleventh grade.
Right.
And they're only there for half a day anyway. So, you know, I mean, it's just, it once again makes it more complicated, especially if you're on one of those CTE bands that are college, like, you know, Bachelor of Nursing, Vet Tech.
If you're a dual enrollment kid, the half-credit of Health is going to definitely make you stumble.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it's.
I.
Awesome.
You're very glad you're graduating, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Let's teach NSD at a back map.
I, there's, there's no way around this, you know, again. It's, it's the right idea, kids, definitely, everybody in the world should take a full year.
Then it would take Health, them take Health as a full year as a freshman. Then they can do PE and exercise, what, what was that? Athletic conditioning, right?
Make PE a full-year course, yeah. I mean, there's a, you know.
Lots of combos, it's like Subway.
The most important thing is we're going to have a budget work session later. There's nothing that money can't fix. So just give us the money and we'll have all of this stuff. It'll be great.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for this very, very in-depth conversation.
Wait, but I do have another question. So the AP study that we have, right, it's a full-year course?
Yes.
So in light of the half-credits, can't, why can't we make that a half-credit course also? I mean, make it, offer it both, right? Because here, so you have someone, especially for those kids now that are going to have to take this junior year Health credit, right?
So you want to make, you want to semesterize AP seminar, so.
No, 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 AP study.
Oh, my god.
AP seminar?
AP study.
No, AP study, because it's an open period anyhow for the student. So then they can have an open period for half of the year and still have that Health or whatever they need for the second half of the year, right? So it could be, because you're going to the same room whether it's a half-credit or a full year, right?
Speaking from personal experience, I think that would be really great because the only reason I took an, like AP study hall my junior year was because there was, the classes that I wanted to take were not offered during that period, so I have a hole in my schedule. So if I could have filled half of that year if, with a graduation requirement, I would have. So, yeah, I think many students would.
Okay, so is the board's recommendation that we add another new course, which would be AP Study Half-Credit Course Option?
I certainly would support that.
That would be my suggestion, just because it, it just, it simply gives another option, especially for those kids that are juniors that are going to have to plug that Health.
That have a really full schedule apart from that. It's a really nice, like, space.
We already have the full-credit course, so it would just be offering a half-credit option. Dorothy, Mary, yes, no?
I agree.
Okay. Is there anything else?
If the committee doesn't like that, then we'll, we can talk about, but I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we will come back two more times.
Right, it come, it kind of makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Howard.
Good morning.
Online Safety and Technology.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's been a little while since we've been here. I think the last time we talked to the board, we were talking about our status of technology and one-on-one devices. And at that point, I think we were not even at two to one. So things have changed a lot since then, thanks to a good pandemic. So again, I'm Dave Howard and Will Buckmaster. And we're here just to give a little update on online safety and technology. We implemented software and hardware improvements to assist online safety for both staff and students. One of our major initiatives was replacing our firewall and it actually has really helped balance and given some stability to our overall network. We appreciate the board supporting that effort about two and a half years ago. We've also made a lot of advancements with utilizing new technologies in the deployment and configuration of advanced threat protection on our devices. It's allowing for device-based content filtering, so that was new since we were, last time we were here, even while off of our network. We have also, the school system implemented Gaggle. Mike Wyant's group is the one that spearheading that effort. That one's more on the alert if something's going on that we see on our devices that notifies his team. So that, that's more in-depth in his area, but.
So, so just for your benefit, Dorothy, so Gaggle is, let's say if I'm a student and I send an email from my computer, and Mike, you can jump in if you want to, that has certain trigger words, right? Like, you know, I'm, I'm feeling real depressed about something or, and, right? So then that is alerted, so then Safety and Security can then get that student the behavioral supports that they need, right? So.
I mean, it actually worked when I was on the campaign trail. I got to speak to a parent that that actually saved their children.
That's great, that's great.
And that's the goal, yeah.
Yep, so, all right, sorry to jump in.
No, thank you for that addition, thank you. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Buckmaster.
All right, so for today, we're going to mainly concentrate on content filtering itself as, as one of our primary methods of, of keeping our students safe. So first is kind of addressing what content filter, filtering is. So right now, we use a combination of software and hardware that checks all network traffic against a list and that list is either of allowed content or blocked content or blanket use of, of categories to do either one.
A question. So wonder if somebody, student has a, has their own Wi-Fi and they let somebody, like a student on the computer, can they use their Wi-Fi if they're in the school? Is this not a good question?
No, 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 so, so, so every person in here has a cell phone. And everybody's cell phone that's not on our wireless, you can do whatever you want with that cell phone. You can, you, you, we can't control what you do with your cell phone. And every single parent who gives their child a cell phone that allows for that cell phone to have a data package, it's incumbent on that parent to then monitor the device they gave to their child that has access to the internet. We have no control over what Verizon data package stuff unless that device is connected on our network. So if somebody comes in and they bring their phone and they want to make it a mobile, well, what they. Mobile hotspot, but how are our devices for connecting to?
So there's a, there's a little bit of nuance there because we do do some device-based filtering and we'll get into that as well. So if, if a student did use a, a cell phone to create a hotspot and you, and to connect our device to it, there is still a level of filtering that occurs at the device.
Yes.
It's not as robust because again, we have this massive appliance that's reading everything as it goes.
Like for instance.
PC can't do that as well.
When I, when I use my Wi-Fi at home, I get this box that says TikTok is blocked, right? I'm not on TikTok, I don't know, you know, but yet every time I get TikTok content is blocked. I'm like, all right, not on TikTok, not even anywhere near it. So, so there is still an element of it, it's just not as robust as if it's connected, so.
All right, so one of the first things is how do we decide what to block and what to allow? The, at the core of everything that we do is, is to facilitate education. So the first thing we do is just block only what we have to block. So at this point, we use SIPA as our baseline. So SIPA has a set of guidelines that we use. That is our foundation for our content filtering. From there, we start doing a, a regular analysis of malware, malicious tools, current security breaches, things that we know could be problematic and we, we start from there to keep the network safe.
So before we go back to define SIPA for us?
Oh, it's the, the child, um, Internet Protection Act, sorry. So the, the other thing that we do is that all of the content filtering is, is compared against the, like a global set of security databases and then the website categorizations that we use are mostly an international standard. There's some, some differences between certain databases. We try to look at all of them as, as much as possible. For our main firewalls, we use the ones that are embedded within. And those are the things that go through. Every website has a category assigned to it for the most part. And then we have a manual block list that's some, is something we maintain over time as we kind of encounter things or we have specific situations that we, we need to remedy. We, we maintain a manual list as well. And these are just some examples of some of the categories that we block. This is, this is by no means all of them, but this is, it's just like a small selection. Things like grayware, grayware are things that might fall, they could be legally challenging, like they could be illegal. But they might be marketed as something that is a legitimate tool. Things like peer-to-peer imaging and, and file sharing, these are things that fall outside of what we do with Google Drive where we, we have some level of control over what students are sharing with each other. We do block as many proxy and anonymizing services as we possibly can, but new ones pop up every minute of every day. So we can be proactive and we are, but new ones, it, it's, it's difficult to keep up with, so. Social networking as a whole, Twitter's the only one that we allow because it's used for messaging from our system. And then uncategorized websites is another one. So there, there are websites that have, either are too new to have adopted a category yet or been assigned one. We block those as well, just until they're able to be assessed and, and have some form of categorization assigned. All right, so here's the two, the two methods that we use now. Again, when you're on our network and this is your cell phone, this is any device that connects to our network. So if you're using BYOD or if you're on our, any of our, our standard networks, all your traffic is, is filtered through our, our central firewall system. All of it's reviewed and checked against the content filtering list to make sure that it's, it's allowed. And if it's not, the connection is, is cut, so. And then off our network, we use a device-based filtering method through Microsoft's Advanced Threat Protection. This doesn't have as many categories, it doesn't have as, as many resources assigned to it, but it is an additional layer of protection. This occurs on any of our devices that are on our network or off our network. So if a student takes their laptop home and, and connects to their, their home Wi-Fi, there's still a level of filtering that occurs at that device. All right, and these are just some, some statistics of where we stand right now on average. So on the network itself, or on our firewall, in about a week, we block forty million attempts. And these are, this seems, this number seems astronomical, but what it also is, is things like that, that TikTok where when you connect to a single website, there's a multitude of, of sub-connections that occur, there's, there's advertisements, there's all kinds of things that are occurring on a single site. So you might go to one website, but there's actually fifteen connections that are occurring. So that's why it, it's forty million seems high, but it's, it's, it's what we hit. And then off, off-network, so on the device base, we see an average of, of about a quarter million every, every month of, of blocked content. Most of those are direct connections where people are trying to connect to a, a specific site or service that's not allowed.
Okay, and we've, we're ramping up the Help Desk and we're going to probably be bringing a topic of the Help Desk in the next few months to the board with the new Service Desk, but we're going to be implementing that. So if people have questions, they can email the Help Desk and it'll get routed to Will or myself or our team. And the Help, it's helpdesk@smcps.org. And we're here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
So I had two questions, actually. The first one, I was just curious. So you might have mentioned this and I might have missed it, but for the blocked categories, who are the categories? Like, is that, is that from the CIPA? Or like where do those categories kind of come from? Is that just like an internationally?
We're talking about this before, that's, that, how the, which categories got blocked? We route through, at the time it was Dr. Walker, and I think he reviews it at the cabinet level on which, where the happy median is with instruction and then blocking and preventing. We're always trying to make sure we're making the right choice to keep the students safe, but still allow instruction to go on.
Yeah, sure.
Were you asking where the?
Yeah, like where do they cat, like who, who like decided the categories?
There's a.
Is it just the internet?
It is, it's sort of, it's like a weird, there's a, there's a weird collective in a way. So there's certain, like Microsoft might categorize things differently than, than Palo Alto. But at the root, most of them have some overlap. So like if a website is dedicated to providing games for, for a person, then it's a game site. Yeah, like, so that's generally how, but there is some nuance there again, like some, some dig in deeper to what services are, are provided from a website. But as a whole, there's like a global network of categorizations that occur.
Gotcha.
And then if there's, there's a mechanism, if we wanted to make one piece of that allowed, we can whitelist it. Instead of just, you know, doing a hard block, we can actually allow that one site if it's, if it's deemed appropriate.
Okay, all right, that, that's, that was interesting and I wanted to know. And then, uh, there's one other thing. So is this like consistent across the entire systems, like, like Wi-Fi or whatever? Or is it, or is it like kind of more specified to like what building it's in? Or is it just like across the board? Like the same things are blocked everywhere essentially?
It, it is, but it's also basically, we are, we're able to present a different level of filtering for staff versus students. So we can get granular, but in general, we try to give staff more leeway and then.
Yeah, I figured. Okay, that, yeah, that's just what I was curious about. Thank you.
Good questions.
Again, it's just understand like the backend of this monster. When we started the pandemic, we were one to three and we weren't wireless, you know, consistently across all of our systems and, and, and where we are here. I just have to, you know, certainly to Dave Howard and specifically to Will, the, and all the people that, with whom you work, like this is, this is a constant twenty-four, twenty-five hours a day, eight days a week, over the top. There is constantly always somebody looking for a vulnerability to exploit, to do harm to systems, kids, what have you. One of the largest challenges, and we've had public speakers who've come out here, is proxy and anonymizing services. People are out there purposely building ways in which you can get around things and then sharing on the TikTok, which we don't let anybody do, how to, how to do that. And then when we're informed of the site, we block this site, we go after it and everything like that. But I understand, you know, how alarming it can be for a parent to realize that they have put this device in their children's hand. More often than not, it's, it's not the laptop that's probably doing the thing that they really don't want their kid to be doing. It's almost always going to be the phone that's in their hand. And that's not on, we did not put cell phones in twelve-year-olds' hands. That's not something that we do. And we certainly don't put anything in a child's hand that has an unblocked, that has no content filters on it. And the vast majority of cell phones that kids have in their hands, the parent, unless the parent has gone through and, and worked with and put all the filtering, which is very complex, very time-consuming, that's the, you know, that's the great, that's the, that's the great, that's the great danger. And it's, it puts us in a really challenging place when somebody comes in and says, last night, my child did. And it's, well, we weren't there, we didn't give them the phone, we don't know what your internet access is. You know, we don't, we, we can do as much as we possibly can with the tools that we currently have. And I thank you for doing the work that you have done so that we.
Thanks for all the support you guys have made. I mean, a lot of it was, you know, very financially driven and we had to, because, you know, we were having outages that affected some of our Zoom meetings, our board meetings. And, you know, we're here as a partner, we're trying to do the best and, you know, it, it's tough with younger kids with technology. and some parents are working full-time, you know, or having two jobs, and, you know, having that, you know, where if your student or your child's doing something you don't really want them to, maybe the computer should stay in the, the living area or something, but that, that's a home decision. And if we're providing a, like, when we had to provide some hotspots for families, we had to get the ones that had filtering, so we can't just, we didn't want to just give them a hotspot that, you know, you get for Verizon, 'cause, you know, we're not then meeting our obligations with, you know, the legislation, so. It is, it is a challenge, but, you know, we, we've gotten all the support from you guys, and we appreciate that.
Well, I just, I appreciate how quickly it is, because, you know, I mean, just seeing with my own kids, like, we, as adults, we are just so far behind, like, where you guys are, like, I mean, you know, like, I mean, like, you know, TikTok, it's like media, right? There's, like, I don't know, apparently you can now steal a Kia with a, with a iPhone cord, right? So that was on the news this morning.
Okay, that's news to me, too.
So it'll crash you up on your TikTok now, because your phone is, is talking.
I actually don't have TikTok, I'm breaking the law.
I mean, I just, I appreciate how quickly you respond, because, you know, we are not in the whole teenage realm where, you know, it goes like wildfire, you know, through everything.
Yeah.
I can't speak highly enough of the team that, that sits behind Dave and I, like, it, it is not unusual to get an email or a text message at, on Saturday at three o'clock in the morning, that someone is like, hey, I just saw this article, this is coming, like, a school system on the West Coast has seen this, and then first thing Sunday morning or Monday, like, the team is at it, and, and seeing what we can do to make sure it doesn't affect us, and I, I cannot stress that enough, like, this is an incredible team.
They're very cool.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it is, it's a very cool group.
Absolutely, yeah, and, um, I was in SMCPS during the computer lab days, so I understand how quickly this has grown, you know, I'm only like.
A bunch of gigantic monitors, and if you dropped on a three-year, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it has grown tremendously, so, hey, I'm just, that's, that's my.
You're a dinosaur.
I'm joking, I mean, I'm not joking, 'cause that was what it was, but, yeah, that was not that long ago, and the fact that, um.
It wasn't easy to get rid of the labs, it really wasn't, but who wants to share a keyboard that's been used, you know, for over and over again?
Yeah, exactly.
Use your own laptop, keep it clean.
You know what, those were our favorite days of, of the week, you know, computer lab days.
Right, exactly right.
Got to finish our work, play a little Pop Tropica.
That was approved on the.
Yes, it was, I promise, because we always ask.
Educational.
All right, anyone have anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry, Dorothy does, I suppose she's, go ahead, go ahead.
So, go back to the questionable material. If parents see something, or they might think that their child, there's some questionable things going on, is that, what do they do? Do they call you, is this help desk gonna be for them?
So it's actually used now, so we have parents reach out to us quite a bit, where we get, they'll say, like, I saw my, my child doing this thing, and ask us questions, so one of the first things that we do is we, we ask for the device name, and we dig into that device, and we find what that exact thing was that occurred, and then we go back through and weigh it against what we already do, and what we could do to prevent it if it is something that needs to be blocked. So we'll work directly with a parent at, at any time, we've, it happens quite a bit now.
And that's an important thing that everybody needs to know, that we, if it's a system-issue device, we can figure out pretty much everywhere you've gone and everything you've done with it. Some things we might not be able to stop at, at, at the first, because we didn't know about whatever the proxy site was, but we will be able to go in and see exactly where the person went and how they, how they got there.
And you can do that remotely, right, you don't have to have the device.
That's correct.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's like the big brother, it's now, it's like the big industries now, it's not just one person, I mean, everything you're doing on your devices can be used to help or prevent something in some cases as well, too, so.
You might think you're alone.
You're not.
No, and we've got a pretty full plate, so we're not just like, not just crying, you know.
No, this isn't something.
This is more if we get a call from Mr. Wyant or Legal, you know, we gotta pretty much pull one to two, three people off to.
Right, once that parent reaches out, we really can get an answer.
And then the other thing that's really great about that, too, is when we do get a parent that says, like, I saw my student at this site, we can run that check against all thirty thousand devices and figure out just how many people are accessing that.
So is your department in the security? Is your department part of security?
No.
We work, we work very, very closely with, with Mr. Wyant's group.
We're in the Division of Supporting Services, DSS.
Is, are there times where you have to work together?
Absolutely.
If there's some, okay, okay.
So specifically, anytime law enforcement gets involved, like, it's something that comes through my desk and Mr. Wyant's team and, and myself, we work very, very closely.
At least two things this week, that I know of.
Yeah, all right.
It's Thursday.
And based on some of the looks is, Mr. Wyant has been sitting there looking at his email and, or looking at his computer.
He's messaging to David Wilk.
We're gonna have to look at this.
Right, that, uh.
Again, because.
Some of his stern looks, I went, oh.
Things happen in the community, kids do things at their home, and then, because there isn't anybody else to arbitrate, mediate, address, it comes to the school, and it has, you know, I, here we are.
It is what it is.
Here we are.
It is what it is.
We go to the schools when needed, when there's something that's going on that was brought to our attention, and we work with the, um, the officers and, you know, provide as much information as we can.
Services, and, yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And again, let me, let me just stress, like, you know, it used to be kind of a pejorative term of that nerdy kind of whatever, but these IT, that, that's cool, I mean, it is, like, you know, it's.
Like, it's not, it's not unusual for us to be at a table talking, and all of us get goosebumps, 'cause we're just excited about our jobs, we're passionate about what we do, and we're here for a reason, so.
That's awesome, yeah, and I say nerd with positive connotation, okay? I am one, self-proclaimed.
I was just thinking that.
He keeps on calling me nerd, like, whenever I say anything to him, he's like, whatever, nerd, it's better than boomer, so I'll take it.
Dr. Smith, you usually put in that you're not really into technology, you've given that up, you have to be.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, but it's, yeah, I'm, it's my job to break stuff, for the record, that is, I am like the world's best tester of devices and software and programming, give it to me, if I don't break it in the first, you know, twenty-four hours, it's probably a pretty darn good piece of tech, I will break it eventually.
Oh, will I have that to your job description, beta tester?
Beta tester, yeah.
And we still don't let him put things on the Google Calendar, so.
Oh, yeah, no, 'cause I, well, poor Kim, again, Miss Short's lovely and wonderful.
And then, then you're gone, and I'm like, Kim, could you please fix that on your Google Calendar? I think he did this, and she's like, yes, he did.
It's the reason why nobody ever gave me explosives, because you can make a mistake with a Google Calendar, you know.
Right.
Still have all your fingers.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Tammy, we've, we've dragged this out long enough that we didn't have to call you out of your other meeting, so, you're on. Or Lisa had to take the brunt of all of our questions, so we could stretch the time for you.
So before you is the December financial report. What you will not see on this is the recent County Commissioner approval for the use of fund balance that will be reflected on your January, January report, they just approved that on Tuesday, and that is an additional one point seven million dollars that was approved. So year-to-date revenues, we are at one hundred and fifty-seven point nine million dollars, representing sixty-two point four nine percent of your budget. On the expenditure side, we continue to monitor the special education out-of-county transfers, that's currently two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars above budget, but within the categorical, it is being managed at this time. And as previously discussed, we did modify next year's budget request to accommodate that increase. Year-to-date encumbrances currently outstanding reflect one hundred and thirty-four million dollars. For year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures are currently at two hundred and thirty-three point nine million dollars, representing an available balance at this time of eighteen point eight billion dollars. Are there any questions regarding the December financials?
Anyone?
No.
No.
No. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And before we conclude on this, I just, thank you very much for the board for entertaining our motion to use our undesignated fund balance to go towards capital improvement projects and technology purchases and, and things such as that, again, it's a great example of how you do not carry an undesignated fund balance. All money must have a purpose, so I think that money is gonna be very purposely deployed, and thank you very much for your support on that.
A little bit of foreshadowing there, Dr. Smith.
No, not at all.
All right, so the next board meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, at, with executive session at five, the open meeting starts at six, so we are going to adjourn and take a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back.